Alright, welcome to the Liberty Vindicate. Liberty City Council Forum, I'm Russell Payne and we have here tonight the five candidates for the three at-large seats for the City of Liberty's City Council. Bruce Bell, Trent LaFleur, Libby Simonson, Nick Dennis, and Debbie Duggar. They are seated in the order in which they appear on the ballot. There are two current incumbents that are seeking reelection, Libby Simonson and Debbie Duggar. Dennis Beasley, who was the other incumbent, did not run for reelection. Tonight, we will hear from the candidates and they're gonna have two and a half minutes to give open statements. We will start with Mr. Bell and work our way to Ms. Duggar. Then when we start the next question, we will start with Ms. Duggar and work our way back, is what we will do. So with that, the timekeeper will let you know when you have thirty seconds and she will then let you know when it is time to stop. So with that, Mr. Bruce Bell, start with you.
Okay, first of all, thank you.
Oh, I'll just real quick before you turn the mic on to the green light, I'm sorry.
Leave it off, okay.
Good, sir?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Alright, I want to thank the vindicator for hosting the question and answer forum tonight. My name is Bruce Bell, I've lived in Liberty now for forty-five years. I'm married to my wife Madeline and have three kids. Twins Brian and Mallory and a younger son Blake. Also have two grandchildren, Weston and Adeline. My kids have gone off to school, college, and have come back to make Liberty their home. The same home where they went to school, played at our playgrounds, and now live and work in our community. My leadership background started with Liberty Youth Baseball Softball. For the past thirty-six years, I've served as Vice President for seven years and President for seven years. And I'm currently still serving on Board of Directors. I also served twelve years on Liberty Elementary School District School Board while as President for four years. I've seen many things come and go in Liberty and my full point in the city is economic growth throughout the city and beyond. Safety will always be a priority and will remain at the top of the list. Making sure our police department, first responders, EMS fire department, continue to work keeping our city a safe place to live and raise a family. The city's infrastructure, which includes parks, streets, drainage, water and electrical, are all in need of strategic upgrades by carefully and conservatively using tax dollars to attack the problems at hand. My approach to many situations is using common sense strategy to resolve issues that we're faced with while planning short and long-term projects to help keep our city moving in the right direction and in working order. With your support, we can continue to prosper in our city and keep our hometown values in place while making Liberty a great place to live and work. Again, my name is Bruce Bell, I greatly appreciate your votes for the City Council in our upcoming city election. Early voting starting on April twenty-second through the twenty-ninth and final election Saturday, May thirtieth. God bless America and God bless the city of Liberty. Thank you, sir.
Mr. LaFleur, you have two and a half minutes, any more for that, you should choose to move.
Hi, as he said, my name is Trevor LaFleur. I've been, I guess, I grew up around Liberty endeavors until 2001 and pretty much Liberty from their own house. I graduated from my high school because my mom worked as a teacher, so I was eager to go to school there. Since then, I've been, I went to Lamar University and have a degree, a master's degree in accounting. And then I obtained my CPA license shortly thereafter. So I've been a CPA for, I believe, seven years. Worked at a firm called BDO in Houston, had quite an array of clients. Then went from there to ExxonMobil and jumped from there to a startup called LandZoom. In this time, I got experience in the power market, oil and gas market. Old folks own market, worked in the dairy ones. And then, now I work with mostly tax clients, international and local. And while I was working at the startup, I had the opportunity from a great man named Bruce Blake who offered to give me an office to office out of and start his own business. Since then, I've been self-employed for about two years now. Anyways, on that note, I'm interested in being on some council because I find budget and rationalizing interesting. I like to understand the conflicts and be a liaison. It's been my job most of my life is to go between the finance and accounting groups or the public and the private, anywhere from an argument with the public ExxonMobil company in France to problems in Asia with how we were adapting certain software. I really enjoy the kind of problem-solving aspect of things. And since I've been in this town, basically my whole life, I had an apartment in Houston, but to tell you how much I loved it, I was here more often than I am there. So anyways, that's me and I would appreciate your vote. Hope you, having a new face that's not already connected to everybody, hopefully is interesting. But if not, I understand, you know, vote for what you want. Thanks.
I thank you for that, so Ms. Sheen.
My name is Libby Simonson. I am honored to be seeking reelection on the City Council. I have served on the City Council since 2011. I'm currently Mayor Pro Tem. Over the years, I feel that we've made steady progress in improving Liberty's infrastructure. It's a process and we're working on it. We are working on our roads, public spaces. It's a long-term process, but we have made headway and we are committed to continuing to make headway. Public safety has always been one of my top priorities. I support our police, fire, emergency services so that we can ensure our first responders have the resources they need to keep our community safe. I will continue to advocate for these tools and the training that they need to protect our city. I also believe in the responsible use of taxpayer dollars. We have maintained a steady tax rate for years by making careful decisions and working within our budget. Keeping taxes flat while balancing the budget is not always easy, but I believe in making the most of our resources to serve the community effectively. One of the things I value most about serving on the City Council is staying connected with you. I have always worked to be accessible and accountable to the people of Liberty. Your input and involvement are essential to making Liberty a better place to live and work. I would be honored to continue serving on the Liberty City Council. Your support and your vote mean everything to me. Thank you.
Ms. Dennis.
Hello, everybody. My name is Nick Dennis. I was born and raised in Georgetown, Texas. Moved here about thirteen years ago. My amazing wife, Michelle Dennis, is born and raised in Liberty. She currently works for the school district at the middle school campus. I have two beautiful daughters, Emma and Mala, and they currently attend the school as well, middle school and elementary school. I currently work for the county in the IT department. Basically, our families invested here. We live it day in, day out. We shop here, we go to the grocery stores, we go to different businesses, everything like that. And I care about this community because I have two little things here that I want to help make it better for them and future generations. But I just want to make sure we're moving Liberty in the right direction, moving forward. And just a way to make sure we're on track and keeping it better for the future generations. Thank you.
Ms. Duggar.
Hi, my name is Debbie Duggar, and that has a little bit of a twang. What happened is when John Hewitt became mayor, he called and said, "Would you come get on City Council?" Then we had Tommy Brandt, who appointed, and I got voted in. And then I thought, "Oh my gosh, do I know enough." So I put a lot of study into it. In fact, I took forty-five hours of classes on the things I thought I was lacking so I could catch up. And what I'm hoping to do here is to continue the work that I've started and what I've begun during my last ten months as a first-time council member. It all started thirty-seven years ago when we chose Liberty. My husband and I visited forty-five different towns trying to find the town that had the exact mix that we wanted. When we got here, we saw the charm, we had the church neighborhood connection that we craved in our lives. And we knew that there was a bonus, that I would be very close to my family because I was raised in Houston. We have loved raising our two kids, Rachel and Drew. We have unforgettable, phenomenal community memories and we still have hopes that they may be back someday to be continued later. I feel that I'm indebted to the town that we were able to raise our children in and I want it to be the community that I knew it was thirty-seven years ago. Some of the things that made us choose this town and to enhance some of the great things that we have now. And I just retired recently from Texas CASA, which is court-appointed, appointed special advocates. I was a pro area specialist. And I had the opportunity to audit policy, to evaluate and train CASA boards and their programs. And I know that through my six years there, I enabled them to increase their capacity, their leadership, and often their financial stability. Now, before that, I was an executive director at CASA Liberty Chambers and that was a true wonderful time. I had very little knowledge and a lot of passion and I grew that from thirty-seven kids that we actually advocated for to ninety-three. I think that if you look at the time that I spent there, the things I was able to accomplish, I think I gained so many of the skills I'm hoping to use in the city. And if you want something really braggy, and thank you very much vindicator, you need to look and see all the things I racked up in there. Thank you.
We're gonna move on to questions. We will start with Ms. Duggar, move our way back and work our way back, so forth. We're gonna have one and a half minutes available for your responses to the answers, to the questions, excuse me. Let's see. Liberty has recently seen the addition of a Wendy's and a Starbucks, both of which were already established in February Dayton. How can City Council foster an economic environment that attracts more unique or in-demand establishments, such as Chick-fil-A or other desirable businesses, to invest in Liberty rather than duplicating what's already nearby?
Good question. I think that one of the ways that we're going to actually attract more people is when we complete a real strong strategic plan and it shows where we're going and how we're gonna get there, which is something I am a big component for and I'm hoping we can work on in the future. And I think that if we can show the many aspects of our town that sparkle, whether it be the historical Sam Houston Center or whether it be the quaintness of the towns or the way the town rallies when there's something that goes wrong or goes right, they appreciate the many blessings that we have. If we can give more emphasis to that, I feel we will attract other ones. I know that we just joined Texas Towns. Texas Towns is a nonprofit that's going to help us to see what other towns maybe have done that we can copy what we can do. And not copy what we bring here, but copy some of their procedures of how to attract more people.
I can repeat the question. Where do you want me to?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, we definitely don't want a copy and paste of every small town. We don't need the exact same thing ten minutes down the road here. Yes, it's gonna be, but we need to have a little bit of difference. I think we should probably focus on working probably closely with LCDC and see how we can work with them to help either come up with new ideas or how we can attract new businesses. And it doesn't have to be a big-name brand. It could be local business owners. It could be something that we don't know of yet that is trying to get the footy go around here. But yes, I agree with Ms. Duggar. We need to make sure that there is not gonna be just a copy and paste of what's right down the road. Let's try to make Liberty a little bit different than what you see everywhere. Coming from Georgetown, Texas, when I grew up, it has a very similar square setup. So when we moved here, it kinda gave me a little feel at home because Georgetown used to be small, as everybody knows, it's north of Boston now and it's literally the extension of Austin. So it has just graduated, but they were able to keep the square and the downtown small-town feel while invigorating and getting new businesses and different restaurants and shops and stuff. So hopefully, we can go down that path.
I definitely agree with those two statements. I was excited when we got the, when we issued the permit for Starbucks. I was excited to see Wendy's. Definitely excited to see a Waffle House cabin happen to be my husband's favorite place to eat. We drive by there often to see if they're turning dirt again. Dayton will not have a Waffle House. You know, we just have to continue to sell our city. And I think we have a good board with LCDC and they work real closely with city management. And hopefully, you know, they will continue to all work together and we can make this a fun, nice place to bring a business.
I'll start by saying I'm very thankful not to have to drive to Dayton for Wendy's and I'll be really happy not to have to drive to Dayton for a Waffle House. On that note, I feel that the, and I'm a little biased because of being a CPA, but I feel that the main thing any town or location needs to attract people is jobs. There is pretty much impossible to live if there's not a means of obtaining income and being able to sustain your life. That being said, the more that you can reach out and really social media was a pretty awesome attractant when I was working at LandZoom. While the company was trying to decide where to build new data centers, one of the things that caught the company's eye was the social media marketing of Abilene, Texas and Fort Stockton, too. And because of that advertising, we knew that they were willing, you know, trying to attract new companies, a data center being kind of a high-tech job. And, you know, we reached out and worked with them. They worked with us on property taxes, lowering the rate for businesses. I know people hate to hear, but doing it that first few years to help them get started pays the difference in the long term. And I'm all for our, you know, future generations having the best and most high-tech jobs here. We don't want just them.
Those are all good things and what I gather is it seems like they're all food places that we're copying. Of course, my waistline doesn't show any difference, but I'm hoping we attract other businesses as well. Dayton doesn't have Walmart and Tractor Supply or Potash Hardware. But I'm sure they do have those places where they go to get those goods and needs. But I would like to see our economic growth stepping forward in other businesses or that will put our local people to work other than food places. But food places are good, too. So people are gonna be what drives what business we get in here. And if people like and push for Chick-fil-A or whatever it may be, I'm sure sooner or later it's probably gonna be coming. I don't know where Waffle House came from all of a sudden, but it's here. Again, not a bad thing, but another food park. So I'm hoping we get some other businesses other than food businesses and with that work together, I think on City Council, we'll be headed in that direction.
Let's stay on business and let's kinda take the next step from some of the things you all suggested. Let's talk about industrial development. What role should the city play, should the City Council play specifically in encouraging industrial development within the city? And how can the city position itself best to attract and retain industry in a competitive regional market?
With that being said, that has to do with growth and growth is good and important to everyone. We want to make sure we fit that footprint that we can continue to grow and bring thriving businesses here for our local people to work. We want to make sure we get the correct businesses here and put them in the right places where they can prosper as well as putting our people here to work for a long time. We don't really care to have somebody here for a couple of years and then move out. I'm sure working with LCDC and what the City Council has already put in that businesses probably have a footprint and a layout of what we currently have and hopefully somewhere down the line, those businesses might come. And I know that the port of Liberty has been a topic of conversation. How much business will that bring, I don't know, but it's certainly something to keep an eye out for. And the land area where we would possibly host any set business would also be an area of concern. We don't want to put right in the middle of downtown, but we also want to make sure that we can accommodate whatever businesses we may be able to bring into town.
My first statement will be that I think we're in a unique location being right between, you know, my Houston. As they grow together, we can, you know, be hopefully the woodlins of the area. If you like the woodlins, if you don't, then the opposite. With that said, again, the social media, just doing the reach out. I don't think any of us work for companies that are trying to move here right now and not work with them either. So we, you know, you need that social media reach out and to talk to the right people to get those companies actually talking to you. I mean, what are the chances? I would never have heard of Abilene, Texas or Fort Stockton, Texas, had I not seen it on social media. And I'll be honest, I don't know I've seen any advertising for the City of Liberty on social media. I apologize, but I missed it. But doing those things is just the first step because that's where we'll find out what we need to do to attract the businesses that we want us and the future generations here to work for.
I most recently retired from industrial property management, so I'm pretty familiar with that. The group that I represented, we were part of Inland Park in Dayton and they bought a big property in Dayton just as I was retiring. The challenge for Liberty is gonna be location. And we've gotta get, we've gotta continue to work with the port and then we're gonna have to talk about putting that rail back across Highway Nine. And so those are things that we're just gonna have to strive to take care of.
Well, growth is coming whether we like it or not. It's happening. Once Ninety-Nine was finished, it's already happened. So Liberty's in a spot where we're kinda landlocked. So I don't know about the growth of an actual industrial area now. But that being said, we can let the surrounding areas have that. We can be the place that the people that work there wanna live. Maybe make it so that they can deal with all the traffic, the hustle and bustle, but Liberty will be a place where they wanna raise their families. They wanna just relax, needless to say. I think we need to continue to, you know, work closely with LCDC, you know? Maybe reach out to some of these different businesses within the industrial sector. Let's see like what we could offer, what we could bring here with what limited space we may have. But either way, we're gonna have to come up with a plan because the growth is coming. And we want to make sure it's the right growth and we want to make sure it's the right things that will benefit the community and the citizens.
I think I completely agree with Brian that we do want growth, but I'm hoping this chosen long-term growth. I think that also that when it comes to the port, if you've been to any of those meetings and you hear about the possibilities of what might be coming and the advancement that's been made and the studies that are continuing and you hear the response from the citizens that are going to these, the excitement that occurs, I think you'll be pleasantly pleased and that glimmer of hope will come back. I also think that one thing that is a little bit different than what was described is we have recently redesigned our website and that was based off of a I've gone to a training, I sat next to someone who'd redone theirs, I found that we could do it for like three hundred fifty dollars and then our city just jumped on it and began. It's adding a lot of new pictures, is trying to capture the moments of our town which have that small-town enhancement and that look of you're in the wonderful city of Liberty, but yet you're this far from something else. And I think, based on conversations and actually a one-day seminar I went with a member on LCDC, they are hungry for structure. And that is something that economic development is something that our new city manager has a lot of pride of how he will enhance our city. So I definitely think we just have to hold our breath and wait on that. It is coming quickly.
Alright, so once we get all these restaurants and all this industrial zoning and whatever, where are we gonna put all of it? Where's it all gonna go? And I think for the city of Liberty, that's a very big question. Zoning, as most know, does not exist here in Liberty. Will you look to have a conversation about zoning going forward for the city? And will you commit to the idea of zoning or at least commit to the idea of the conversation? How's that?
I'll admit to the conversation of zoning. And I've looked at it before and I think there's a definite list of pros and cons. And I think that you have to be very careful when you add zoning to a town that you don't take away some of the character of the town. And I think also if you take that energy and effort of wanting to have zoning into how can we fill the storefronts that we have that are empty? The storefronts that might need to be spruced up a little bit and that we can actually advance our structure and what we have in our businesses? I think that is the first thing we ought to do before we jump off into something like zoning. Am I ready for the conversation? Yes. But it is something that I would wanna spend hours and hours Googling and researching and learning and going to different towns who have successfully zoned and then towns who have not successfully zoned to make sure we're doing the right thing and then also the wrong thing. But I don't think that's our first step. Thank you.
Yeah, so somewhere like we, it's a tricky one because you definitely don't want someone coming in saying, "You have to do this. This is what it is now." We have to basically look at what we got. We gotta look at the pros and cons. We need to see, is this gonna be beneficial down the long-term aspect of it? I'm definitely open up to conversations. We can talk all day. I wanna see data, I wanna see facts, similar to what Ms. Duggar said. Like I wanna see the pros and cons, where it's worked, where it hasn't worked. Why did it work? Why didn't it work? How can we spin that or how can we do it in the favor of our residents? And, you know, businesses and everything like that. Because you don't just wanna just turn it into something that Liberty is not. But yes, I'm definitely open up to multiple conversations. Like I said, I wanna look at the data, I wanna look at the facts and I wanna see what is the best route and option we can do regarding this zoning situation moving forward.
What some of the citizens may or may not know is that several years ago, City Council had multiple workshops on zoning. I was saying that we got a lot, a lot, a lot of kickback from the real estate developers and the real estate agents, people who are buying and selling in Liberty. I'm just not, I mean, I'm open to the conversation and we've looked at it and I think we need to continue to look at it, but it's, I don't know that it works for Liberty, Texas.
I'll piggyback on Debbie's answer because I really like to. And I'll just, I'll just add that, you know, art before the wars. I think we need to know what exact zoning we even need or, you know, is interested in being in the area before we go to spending hours and hours researching and all this time on it and all probably a lot of money to for something that we may not even use or may have to completely redo by the time it's over. And then on that note, I think the most important thing that we all have, I have to remind myself and we all have to remember is that, you know, we need the people to know the pros and cons of people that we represent. And after they know that, are they interested in zoning? Because if they're not, well, that's who we're representing. So there's, I would say I'm not open to the conversation if that's not the point. But I'm certainly open to it when the time is right.
All good and true things everyone said there. Not to be redundant, but there's gonna be pluses and minuses with everything. But following in on the same page, you know, I don't think I'm ready as well as City of Liberty is ready to start placing in zone because when you do, if there's a new company that comes in and there's no zone, what kind of place are they gonna build and how is it gonna be accommodating Liberty and so forth? And if you do put in a certain zone, how does it affect already established buildings and businesses? So it's a very careful road you gotta walk to make sure what you want and what you don't want. But right now, zoning is gonna be a tough hurdle to jump. I just think that right now, we're not there yet economically, growth-wise or population-wise. And those are some things that'll have to be factored in before we dive into that yes or no vote.
So folks, we're all gonna talk about it. Alright, sometimes when you're on City Council, you're not always gonna agree one-hundred percent of the time. So what will you do to foster a healthy working relationship with other council people and staff that you work directly with, with the council if you're elected?
I think bottom line is that we're all trying to row the same boat in the proper direction. So we all gotta get along. You may not, this, you may not agree with somebody and they're voting their stance on something, but at the end of the day, you gotta respect their opinion. And whether you vote for it or you don't, again, at the end of the day, that is their opinion, may not be yours. But they may bring up some strong points that maybe you haven't considered yet. So when it's all said and done, you still gotta shake hands and give a hug and a kiss goodbye and say that was a nice valid effort to try and get your point across and it didn't make it. But we're rolling this way. But we're rolling this way, so you need to jump on board with us and we need to all get along. In previous administrations that I served in, it was seven of us. And at the end of the day, we all looked at each other and to have a good evening, walked away and didn't cuss and cuss and talk bad about each other. We went on about our business and next meeting, rolled around, it was new business at hand. So I think before it happens, after it happens, in between when this happens, you all gotta get along. And again, row the boat all in the same direction so we can prosper and move forward.
I completely agree with that. At the end of the day, our passion should follow the passion of the people we represent. If they're not concerned with an issue, there's no point us wasting a lot of time arguing about it. And then again, as a CPA working, you know, I was talking to IRS, talking to government agencies of businesses and have to break the news to people that they owe money for that. Some very familiar with conflicts on a, on a, on a daily basis. Being able to mediate in that, I can take the hit. But again, I would reflect that, you know, passion should follow the people. If the people don't want you to fight or something, then don't waste their time fighting for it.
Sometimes you just have to agree to disagree. If we all voted and all agreed on everything 100% of the time, we probably wouldn't be a very good council. It can't be that postage stamp. I've never been afraid to be a one no vote, a lone no vote. And somebody said, why did you bother? It just is what it is. And again, does it mean I don't like you? No, just means I don't agree with what your decision was. And so you just have to agree to disagree. Sometimes you walk out and you're still friends.
People come from all walks and lives and they bring different things to the table. But at the end of the day, you have to have conversations. It may be easy, it may be hard. There may be things that you don't agree with and there may be things you do agree with. But at the end of the day, the common goal is trying to get to what we're trying to accomplish. Like most have said, there's gonna be things that we all don't agree on. But if we don't have those conversations and we try to talk it out and we try to figure out what is the best for the residents in the end game, then, you know, this may be, it may not go anywhere. But at least you stand your ground and you look at the facts and the data and you present it and you discuss it. You have discussions and you address what you're trying to work on. And it's, it's hard for everyone to be all on board at the same time. My current career, I've talked all walks of life from chief of police to district judges. So I know there's, nobody gets on the same page ever. But when you do, things get accomplished. So just work, foster that communication with everybody and see where we can find a common ground to see if it's gonna be a benefit of everyone.
I think to foster a healthy relationship, I think there's three things. I think you have to gain the respect of your fellow councilman. And that's because you're prepared, you've educated yourself, you've figured out what your viewpoint is, and you're ready to discuss it. It means you've done your homework before the council meeting. I think the second one is that you're completely transparent and you ask the questions. And sometimes if it doesn't get done, you go ahead and wait. Sometimes just to grant or council meeting's a little longer, you ask it again at the next council meeting. And I think by doing that, you're not holding a card, you're not holding any questions back. You're doing what you think is the best for the city. And then the third and the most important thing, I think, is to have respect for your fellow councilmen. Because you know that they're all coming for the reason to help the city. And I think that this last year, we had a moment probably three or months ago where all the City Council realized that we were going the same direction for the same thing. And that made us have such pride and it made us have a sense of accomplishment.
All right. Let's talk funding for the city. City Liberty faces ongoing infrastructure needs while also dealing with rising property values and the loss of Cambridge Fund revenue. How would you balance the need for investment in city services with the impact on taxpayers? And do you foresee a need to raise the tax rate in the near future?
I'm real pleased that we didn't have any new revenue rate. We had no new tax revenue this last year. And I think how we were able to accomplish that is we spent a lot of extra time going over the budget line by line by line, several times, asking questions, trying to get more information and trying to find something that we could all agree on. So when you ask me, do you wanna know if we're gonna raise taxes? I have my idea. We don't know what's gonna be coming to us for the next year. We don't know what the property balances, the property tax assessment is gonna be. We don't know what their appraisals are gonna be. We do know that we get their appraisals, then we go back to the budget. We look, we study, we try to see what we can do, what we can accomplish. And I think more than that, if we have the strategic plan, we know exactly what our first priority was. We know exactly where we wanted to put our money. And I think if we continue doing that and our energy and effort, we would be able to at least know, yes, if we raised it, here's the reason. And this is why we're doing it for the citizens. We're not just doing it to do a happy ever after, but because we think it's what's best.
Similar thing. We're gonna look at the current budget and then we're gonna have to address the problems that become. Do you want me to raise taxes? No, I currently pay them. I'm trying to keep it as low as we can. But that being said, like Ms. Dager, we don't know what's coming. But we do know what we currently have and what's budgeted. Now, is there areas that we need to maybe trump some back? Is there something we can move around, maybe adjust some things to get to things that we do need to keep taxes down? It's all gonna be coming down to communication, line items, figuring out what's being spent. Is this service needed, et cetera? But transparency, just keep everybody informed, keep the city informed. Let the residents know, hey, we're doing X, Y, Z to make sure this is, we have the funding to do this and why we're doing this. And to get the feedback and see what everybody's saying, just to make sure everybody knows we're all on the same page and we're trying to do it in the best interest.
I don't believe anybody wants to raise taxes. I don't wanna raise taxes, I don't wanna pay more taxes. Is it inevitable gonna happen? Sure, it's gonna happen. Will it be this year? Will it be next year? Will it be five years from now? I don't have the answer for that. Again, we just have to work through the budget process. We have to see what we raise from our property tax assessments. And, you know, we just, like I say, we want Liberty to grow and we want to keep good employees. And we are gonna have to pay for that.
I obviously agree with everyone else in that, you know, my goal, I think all of our goals are to minimize taxes as much as possible. You know, that just gives people more to spend. For some people, it's very hard to pull that one-year check, especially if they don't, you know, they're gonna have to plug traffic month-to-month. That being, that being said, you know, when you're in a harder economic time than before, you know, that increase is especially painful. I would, I would find it extremely hard to believe that there is no fat to trump, right? Unless it's everything's perfectly 100% efficient. And I can promise that I'll never personally achieve that. So I don't think any entity will either. So that, you know, that being said, I think this is kind of a tough economic time. And my hope would be that if there does have to be a property tax increase, that either A, it's because of something that benefits the community at large or B, it's because there was absolutely no other choice and we can be very transparent and explain exactly why there was no other choice.
First and foremost, I wanna applaud current council for not raising taxes yet or at all. That's been a good thing. But inevitably, if we see the growth that everyone's talking about, somewhere down the line, there may be a time where taxes have to go up. And I get asked this here a lot in the last month and a half or so, what are you gonna do? And I don't think people totally understand if you want these things that you're talking about added to it, somehow or another, you have to pay for it. And we can always tighten up belts, live a little lean, maybe cut here and cut there. That's what you build a budget for and most importantly, try to work in that budget. And when doing that, you have to cut some things here and there. And again, they may not be the things that you wanna see cut. But to order, in order to prosper and grow, that may be somewhere down the line. How, God, it's not next year. But inevitably, I think it may be something that's gonna have to be looked at and we'll have to see where you can make cuts and pool your resources and put them all together and figure out a plan to work together and please everyone's needs in that respect.
Staying on taxes. Getting funny, it was tax week and the health was sent to the property tax. That was that, too. So thanks. Anyway. Explain the relationship between the City Council in terms of, between the property appraisals and property tax assessments. What is your role in the tax assessment process?
I'm not having knowledge in that other than current council, but I would hope that we could work with them to hold tax rates and be able to assess fairly and properly across the board. I think sometimes people look at things and because you are in City Council, you don't have to pay taxes. Well, that's not true. I gotta pay them just like everybody else. So with that being said, we just need to focus in on everything involved. Again, I mentioned pooling resources and pulling everything together to work hand-in-hand with that and make sure that we are as fair as we can across the board in taxing everyone involved.